Welcome to the, what are we, April, April nineteenth. Village of Wood, sixteenth, Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could you have my mic?
Yeah, give me one of those nights. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats. Now, the agenda is right, I, I, uh... Don't know how to type apparently. Okay, so has the board had a chance to read the meetings from three, the minutes from three nineteen?
Yes.
Offer motion to accept those minutes?
I will second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Woodbury Townhouses, um, will offer a motion to abandon that application pursuant to Village Code three ten dash fifty.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll offer a motion for a special meeting on May seventh at six P M. Uh, this will be just to take care of some housekeeping items, so it'll be relatively short meeting. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's our administrative business, on to our regular agenda. Archidagus Unit B three, review a minor amendment to the previous approval of an addition to Unit B three within the Archidagus Summer Bungalow Con... Highland Mills, as known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section two one three, Block one, Lot one dot eleven. So, council, please send this out. Got up the resolution. So, we're replacing specific condition seven B with the following. Prior provided owner's endorsement and entity disclosure form for Unit B four, the tax seasonal dwelling that is having exterior renovations before the apartment's application. We add a set number eight. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant shall provide a report prepared by a New York State licensed engineer or the certified operator concerning the operating status of existing sewer systems and provide copies of state and federally required operating reports and discharge monitoring reports to the building department to determine that an existing sewer system is operating in compliance with all regulatory requirements. Provide copies of the current Orange County Health Department approval and operating reports filed with the county for the last operating season to the building department to confirm that an amended permit for the Health Department is not required. And those are just some changes that council had made, so I'll offer a motion to accept the resolution. Just right there. Oh, second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
X D nineteen Lake Street Dumpster Enclosure, review materials submitted to amend the A R B for dumpster enclosure. Said property is located at nineteen Lake Street in Highland Mills, as known as the Wood Village of Woodbury Tax Map, the Section two one six, Block five, Lot twenty-seven dot three.
Yes, thank you. Previously, we recommended that bollards be installed. Um, we, we referred to the board, did you consider whether yellow reflective covers are appropriate in this instance, as the bollards are to protect damage to the enclosures versus life and safety? And, uh, if the trucks are dropping, uh, picking up or dropping off refuge, they may, they, if they're yellow, they may be more visible. Um, something for the board to, uh, to reflect on. Uh, we also, um, the board should, just whether you want to or not, but it's, we recommend you discuss whether the gate to the enclosure should also be cedar wood or another material that would be acceptable, depending on the board's preference. We can work with the applicant on this issue, um, during plan signature.
But the applicant actually gave us a sample of what he wanted to put there.
Of the what?
I thought he, when he did his application, he gave us a sample of what was going to be the fencing material.
Of the fencing, yes, but not, the gate wasn't noted.
I just think, right, so the fence is gonna be like a...
Just gonna be like a regular wood stockade?
Wood stockade.
Right.
Are we still gonna require the planting of the trees around it?
Yes. So we're just talking about what should, the gates here probably should just match the rest of the fence.
Yeah.
Match the rest of the fence. And then the bollards, put the...
A yellow bollard.
The bollards are inside the, are inside the fence, right?
Yes, yeah.
So they won't be seen.
They won't be damaged, they won't be hit.
No, not even that, they won't be seen from the outside.
Right.
The fence will, the fence will protect them, so...
That's even better.
So they get, so the yellow coverings for the bollards. Are you updating the resolution?
Yes, did you say yellow coverings for the bollards?
Yes.
Yeah, a little reflective coverings.
Reflective coverings. Thank you. Prescription strength.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for this one?
Nope.
So the applicant has given us, um, the ability to act without them being here the next year. Not here for the bollards. So council has prepared, provided a draft resolution approval to circuit it to the board. So of course, we have our usual separate pages of facts and findings. And we get to the specific conditions. No building permits shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architectural Review Board as part of the approval, nor show any certificate of occupancy issued for any structure constructed except the performance of such renderings. Any deviations or floundering will require further planning or review. All conditions of prior approvals and conjunctions with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions except those specifically set forth in this resolution. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated March fourteen, twenty twenty-five. All areas surrounding dumpsters and dumpsters enclosed shall be kept immediately orderly conditioned. As at all times, refuge shall be completed completely contained within the dumpsters and dumpsters enclosed. All new plantings shown on plans or as required or authorized by this resolution of approval shall be planted in a timely manner, assisted with planting seasons contained in a healthy and vibrant condition perpetuity.
And I just modified number three to say after dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, to the satisfaction of the village engineer, which shall include reflective coverings for the bollards and the gates shall match the fencing. I'll, I'll fix up the gates shall match the fencing, but the gates shall match the fencing.
Questions for the board?
Nope.
Offer motion to accept amended resolution.
I make that motion.
All in favor?
I'd offer the motion.
All right, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving on, one fifty-nine Route thirty-two Ice Cream Stand. Public hearing and review of materials submitted for a site plan and special permit. We open the dugout ice cream stand, the property is located one fifty-nine Route thirty-two in Central Valley, as known in the Wood Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two two six, Block one, Lot nine dot two. Good evening, sir.
Hi, Sean Murphy from Highland Mills, I'm the applicant. Um, this is, I guess I'm just coming back, kinda going through the process, I don't know if anybody from the, if they went to say anything, or do you guys have any questions for me?
You go first, we go to the consultants, and then we go to the public.
Okay, so the only thing that, um, was just made aware to me was perhaps that, um, the water usage would be unacceptable, um, because of the, the moratorium they have on it. Just thinking about that, two things, uh, I believe the estimate that was given from twenty nineteen is incorrect. Uh, I don't think we would go over that threshold where you would need, um, the special permit, if I could use that term. Uh, and additionally, this was, this isn't really a new, um, building of any sort, it's been there forever. I believe probably, um, the usage had been calculated in the grand scheme of things. Um, you know, to say that, that was always coming out of the water supply and we're not really taking, although it's been closed for the past few years, um, and I don't know what year the moratorium was put in place, but I know this was operating up until, I believe, two thousand twenty-one.
Does anybody have questions, Sean?
Nope.
No questions, no. Um, so regards to the bulk table, uh, there's some things that have to be cleaned up and updated, you know, for instance, a lot of areas listed, um, two acres in size, whereas the bulk table indicates it's four and a half acres.
It's actually two acres, the other, uh, two and a half acres is the neighboring property, which they are separate parcels. I was able to verify that, I don't know where, I didn't under, really understand that bulk table, what that even meant, um, because...
This table right here in the corner that I'm showing, so this shows all of the zoning requirements.
Oh, okay.
So this has to reflect what the property actually is.
Oh, so that perhaps, uh, may have been an error on the, uh, the, the site surveyor, or perhaps he was considering, I, it didn't make sense that he would combine the neighboring property, although the neighboring property is owned by the same, um, L L C that this property is. So together, I think, if you were to take, I believe it's Fort Knox Gold Buyers, and that together is four point five, but just this parcel is two acres.
Right, so whoever...
Yeah, just have updated.
Just have them update that, and then, that doesn't require you come back here, that would be dependent upon your plan signing, so... Steven Green, just call him.
Yeah.
To have the bulk table reflect.
Okay.
I'd like to say a lot.
Yes, and, and in the same vein, there's, uh, also on the setback, um, it shows the fifty-foot, uh, setback line versus the forty-foot shown. So it needs, just needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, that was, if you scroll down, I think you can see, one says existing and the other one, if you go back to the, the next, I think one page before that. Oh, there, okay, so yeah, actually, I'm sorry, can you go back the other way? We move, we eliminated, here's thirty-two, we eliminated these spots here, we moved them to the back. Uh, therefore, you know, you don't have people backing out, and we're not within that fifty foot. I believe one or two of these has to be kind of just, everything's slid back a little bit, but we'll make sure that there's no parking spots within fifty feet of the roadway.
That's right.
And that's just a matter of striping, yeah. The ones in the front will definitely be eliminated, I think these ones on the side, they were concerned about after I had made the, uh, adjustments.
Okay, and so to continue with the, the parking, um, the applicant chose twenty-one parking spaces, several of these spaces are located within, they require fifty-foot setback. Um, rough scale indicates the paved service area and the ice cream stand are approximately twenty-two, thirty-five square feet, uh, which would require forty-five stalls, where there's approximately sixteen complying if you eliminate the spaces that are in the setback. So, we recommend you consider if this is an appropriate amount of parking required for this site, and whether the twenty-foot stall minimum could be appropriate, so the applicant could expand their parking area to comply, so you could possibly park in the back.
Right, and I believe we, I'm only required, because of the square footage, twenty spots.
Yes.
But because, the, the way that was, where it's such a huge area, and we don't wanna have, you know, just random, you know, the way we were gonna actually put the parking spots, it's almost like we have too much of an area, right? But so, I mean, if we really wanted, I guess we could add more spots somewhere, but I really didn't understand what that, the point of they were saying that, you know, uh, what their issue with that is, I'm, you're saying I should have more parking spots?
They're saying you have to have the twenty, but you can't include the spots in the front that are in the setback area.
Right, so there's still enough, but what's with the forty-five that you're telling me, that that's what I would be capable of?
Well, that's based on the code, that's the square foot, based on the square footage in the code, that's what...
Of the, of, of the blacktopped area, if you will.
With counting, yes.
Right.
So, but that's up to the, the board to consider.
Letting us know that if we, a strict reading of the code says forty-five spots.
So I would need more spots.
But we, but we have the ability, if we feel it's adequate to waive that requirement with what you're showing us.
Okay.
That's all, he's, he's just covering his bases, saying that this is what the code says, but this board has the ability to reduce that number based on either what we've seen in the past, or the narrative, or what you put, so...
I understand.
Flexibility.
We have that flexibility, so we're not asking you to put another twenty-five spots.
Okay, great.
How many spots were within the fifty foot?
I think he's just, I think Jim is saying maybe these two down here.
Yeah, I think we figured four, 'cause there's, the line kinda cuts two, two spots, two stalls. Right? Yeah.
That room to flip-flop them.
Yeah, I would just move them to the back section here.
That's fine.
And it's not, and there, there's no setback issues or nothing going back that way.
Right, he'd just go back this way.
Right.
And then, uh, the, the moratorium, which actually was already discussed, so...
Well, let's step ahead, yeah. Harry, Harry, the Water Department, uh, the Water Department asking you for the last couple of years, so we'll hopefully get that cleaned up.
Great.
Um, let's see, let's see. Uh, just a minor thing with the A R B, the applicant stated they intended to paint the facade, we assume this is to match the existing, the applicant should confirm whether you...
Yes, the same colors, it'll just be, just be cleaned freshened up, yes.
And so we recommend that that gets added as a note on the plans, that's all. And then, the board, if you can wanna consider the existing landscaping, or lighting, or refuge, if, is it acceptable?
There's any changes?
No. No.
Right enough to see our ice cream, that's all that matters. Any questions? Any questions for Jim?
No.
Doctor Phil?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So, uh, we have a April eleventh report. The applicant has modified the plan to eliminate the spaces along thirty-two as we requested. Uh, they increased the drive aisle width to twenty-four feet, uh, but, you know, based on the other comments with the setback, those spaces will have to slide a little bit towards the westerly side of the property to, to be compliant. Uh, as you said, you have the twenty-one spaces, the twenty is the minimum that's required. So we have several recommendations, you know, in terms of conditions of approvals, uh, which, there's four items. One, that the area where those spaces are removed along Route thirty-two, that gets topsoiled and seeded so that people don't think to park there. That we put some grass there, and get some no parking signs, which will have to be approved by the village board, but at least we can get that in the works. Um, and then, in terms of just a general note about maintaining the striping, since this is a gravel lot, you know, and note that on an annual basis, that you have to, you know, re-stripe as necessary. The way that the code is written, I think the board has the ability to, you know, just require the twenty spaces. We're recommending that after opening, if on a consistent basis, the demand is higher, if you're very successful, uh, the area on the west, additional spaces could be, uh, built there or striped out. And I don't think we need them right now, but we would recommend that a condition of approval would be to, to just monitor, and if it's consistently, that it's not enough parking, or people are, you know, coming out in the area that's in that buffer, the fifty-foot buffer, that more spaces could be provided, and I think there's plenty of room, but there's no sense doing that unless it's necessary.
Understood.
Um, then in terms of a future condition, across the street, there's a hotel that's proposed, to just be able to ensure that you coordinate with anything that they're doing when they get finalized, um, and to, they, they had proposed some improvements along thirty-two, so that it would be coordinated. Uh, in the interim, it may be worthwhile to do some striping in that fifty-foot area, just to define kind of a, a entry point, so that people aren't just driving haphazardly there, 'cause you have a open curb cut. So, we're just recommending those as items the board should consider as, uh, conditions of approval. Um, but other than that, I think you addressed our other comments.
You have any?
No, I have no further questions.
Did you get the, the memos this time, 'cause I think last time we forgot to get copies of them.
I got a couple, the only one I didn't know about was the, the water one. Although perhaps I read that wrong, because I did get something, I just didn't understand that I, you know, I would've had to take that extra step, because I believe I would've been able to go to perhaps the Water Department, have it rectified that, you know, we would've had to look at other years and said, well, there's no way we're using that much water there, but...
We're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do on that one.
Great, okay.
Would you, Kelly, would you mind maybe just sending a memo to the mayor about the signs that the village board may need to approve, if they can add that to their the twenty-four meetings, so that could be taken care of there, too? Anybody have any questions for Phil?
Nope.
I just ask if you take a seat for a second, Sean?
Sure.
I'm gonna open, uh, the hearing up now, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing for the dugout, anybody wishing to speak on the dugout application? I ask that you please step to the podium, state your name and your comments. Don't all get up at once.
Nobody likes ice cream?
Second call for dugout, public hearing, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call for the dugout, public hearing, anybody wishing to speak? Being nobody's chosen to rise and speak, and we've received no written comment, I will offer a motion to close the public hour.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we talked before the meeting, so you'll hear from us either way.
Great, okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I...
You did, right?
Okay, second that motion.
What'd you just think, what it didn't leave?
One of those nights.
Yeah.
Uh, Hartman, Twin Home Model for Golden Hills, again, this is a public hearing, review and discuss materials to amend the site plan, A R B enriched preservation for proposed duplex residential dwelling located within the active adult community phase of the Woodbury Village subdivision, previously known as W P three. Said property is located at forty-nine and fifty-one Southwood Falls, Central Valley, as known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two five five, Block six, Lots nine and ten. Uh, the applicant has asked that we extend the public hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, because of the holiday, but we had already noticed, so...
Okay.
Anybody here wishing to speak on the Hartman Twin Home Golden Hills application? Second call for the Gold, uh, Hartman Twin Homes Golden Hills application. Third and final call for the Hartman Twin Home model Golden Hills. All right, I will offer a motion to extend the public hearing to May twenty-first.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
It's gonna have to be published that you're sending it, or no?
Yes, they'll have to re, they'll have to renotice it. No? Right.
They do not have to republish or renotice, it was...
If it was extended.
If it's just being extended.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought you meant it was properly published, it was properly noticed, people can tune in tonight. Or they can contact us.
Well, yeah, it was, though, properly, they asked us after we published it to extend up.
Correct, if they, if that didn't, we would be talking.
Local law number four, twenty twenty-five, comprehensive plan amendment, review and discuss the local law referred by the village board. Kelly, you're up first.
Sure, so, um, you've been referred to local law that amends the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of that is because the Land Preservation Committee, which is, also has a different committee title, but I remember it as the Land Preservation Committee has been working on reviewing the Open Space and Natural Resource Protection Plan, which is an addendum to the comprehensive plan, and in order to update that and replace that addendum with updated information, you have to actually modify the comprehensive plan. So that is being referred to tonight, so that you can take a look at some of those modifications to the Open Space and Natural Protection, Natural Resource Protection Plan, so there's a lot of words in it.
Well, a lot, a lot of words over here.
Yeah.
Questions for Kelly, I want this, what this is due for tonight?
Nope.
Jim, I know H two M has a very lengthy memo, we won't make you read it.
Thank you.
All of those, as the board taken a chance to look over.
I've, I've pronounced this.
I mean, the only comment I have, I mean, I agree with everything that H two M put in theirs, was the, against the updating of the, the maps to reflect the current landscape of Woodbury, 'cause the maps in there are probably from the original. Original comprehensive plan. Yes, does anybody have?
Assuming that's also gonna contain the new elements with the new laws, that if, if they change the wetland laws, you're gonna get it here. So, all right.
The D E C did, right?
Yeah, the D E C did, but they're not, I don't think those would be reflected.
Well, be reflected if they changed any designations as far as the water here.
I don't think so, what are the, did the actual maps? I don't think that they would.
Okay.
But I think that the maps that are included in this one are just so outdated.
Right.
That, I mean, there's things on there that haven't existed in a while.
Wouldn't be helpful with the talk.
If there's updated information.
Yeah, just to know, like, you know, you know, to what degree they're considered wetland, you know, buildable, not buildable disturbance areas, so you just don't...
Actually, I guess, 'cause, yeah.
You understand what I'm saying?
'Cause we did the ground, all right, we did the groundwater study map, and then I know H two M mapped all of the water bodies.
Right.
For the water quality.
Overlay.
So they should be merged.
That should be merged with this, right?
But I don't think it has to do with the D E C's new regulations, but I think those two maps should be merged.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that, I agree with that a hundred percent.
And I don't think the new D E C regs would change what we consider...
What you consider your village.
Our water quality, I think ours is more restrictive than what the, the D E C's is, yes.
Okay, so we're more restrictive.
We're more restrictive than our water quality than the D E C.
So we'll be better off.
So we're better off with our.
And we don't wanna show people something that's less, and then imagine them coming before you, and... Uh, but that is something that I know, um, is being considered, is, is updating the maps, and that was pointed out in the remarks as well, so...
Any other, other than what's in H two M's suggestions, maybe, does anyone have any other feedback? I will offer a motion to have H two M's memo forwarded to the village board, and that, the planning board adopts their recommendations.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Claudia, that was really wordy for absolutely no reason.
I butchered that, too, Claudia, I'm sorry.
She does have the site for all you guys.
She does, she's been working, she's been working with us, she's been working with us long enough now.
You read the minutes, and it's like, God, I sound...
You read the minutes, and you watch the video, you're like, oh, God.
Yeah, how did she get that for that?
Moving along tonight, K J Water Treatment Plant, review materials submitted for site plan, special permit, A R B, and Ridge Preservation for tri-vent, actually, lot-vent. Uh, for proposed water treatment facility located one forty-seven Springs Road in Highland Mills, known as the Woodbury Tax Map, Section two one three, Block one, Lot forty-nine. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dan Durfee with, uh, C D M Smith, and I'll be presenting, I, I, I'm not certain exactly if you want us to present a snapshot, or if you wanna just review the H two M's comments that we've received.
Uh, typically, it's been a while, I, I don't, I don't know if everybody was on this board.
I think I was when this started.
When this started, it's been a while.
When this started, eh?
If you want to just give us a thousand-foot view, that would be great.
Yes.
And I do have one request, if you could send this digitally to the village department tomorrow, so they can add to the, to the box.
They'd like to do that earlier.
But I think this is most of what you've sent.
Yeah, I, I kinda wanted to do kind of exactly what you said, it's a, a quick snapshot of the, where we're at in the project. Um, we don't have a lot of the details, I appreciate H two M's comments that they prepared for us on the submittal we made earlier this year. Um, we are in the design of the water treatment plant, and I'll, I'll take you through, uh, this presentation kinda just goes kinda over the big picture, and then exactly where we're at with the water treatment plant. So, as you know, uh, the village has embarked on this overarching water, uh, project that encompasses bringing water from the Catskill Aqueduct up in North, uh, New Windsor, I'm sorry, uh, approximately fourteen miles down to the village. And we've completed the transmission main that was installed over a couple of different phases from the village up through Woodbury, Cornwall, and then New Windsor, um, in twenty twenty-three. We, the end of twenty-three, we completed the twenty-four inch line. Um, we also installed, um, the Mountainville Pump Station and Well Supply System, uh, Ridge Road Pump Station and the Well Treatment Building. Um, and those facilities were both in Cornwall and New Windsor, or, I'm sorry, Woodbury. We're in Phase Two now, uh, as I, as I mentioned, we completed the transmission main, uh, we're working on the physical uh, tap into the Catskill Aqueduct, we, we've got the tap itself completed when the, the aqueduct was shut down, um, last year. Now we've got the facilities, um, on that site, uh, on Riley Road, that will, the, the construction has started, uh, as of last week, on the actual, uh, physical structures, uh, on Riley Road, that'll complete the transmission main and allow us, once we have the treatment plant built, to start taking water from the, uh, New York City down through the pipeline into the village. Um, we have, in the process of building that pipeline, we did, uh, construct an interconnect with New Windsor, so there is water flowing in the pipeline right now to the village. Uh, the interconnect, um, is located in, just before Riley Road, um, on Route ninety-four. So that, uh, currently is, uh, we just recently got approval for a million gallons of water, um, to flow through from New Windsor. They've been averaging last year about a half million, up to a half million gallons. So that's the big picture, the map on the right of that page, the project overview, kinda shows the pipeline and all of the facilities. Uh, the next page is the existing site on Seven Springs Road, I think most of you may be familiar with that. Um, we've got a couple of different images there that depict the existing facilities. Um, and, and then over the, the last, uh, you know, couple of years, we were in here, or we actually weren't physically in here, but during COVID, we had made some presentations to the board, received a lot of comments, and we're in the process of addressing those comments. And, uh, DOH asked us to look at a different, or a, a different treatment technology. Uh, we have since done that and decided to go in that direction. So we're redesigning that treatment plant now, and the, the, the site plan that was presented to the board, a couple of months ago, uh, is what we're, you know, here today to just kind of, um, talk through, uh, you know, big picture wise, uh, we're in the process of developing the design around this new treatment system. So the site plan itself has changed from what you saw in twenty-twenty-two to how we've laid it out now, and we've taken a lot of the board's comments and tried to incorporate them into the layout that we, you know, pushing, building back further off the road, using the, the slope of the land to, to hopefully, you know, push some of the buildings down a little lower in elevation, et cetera. There is, you know, the, the facility itself has, I think we were at two million gallons. We're designing for a twenty-year life on this, this facility, and it's going to go from two million to seven million now. Um, with the ability to expand in year twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, I'll expand it up to fourteen by adding some modules. And one of the questions H two M asked on this site plan is,
you know, the seven million gallons don't show any additional building or doubling the size of the plant, basically. The size of this building, this new technology, it's smaller units, so we're, that the entire, you know, the expansion will occur within this building. There will be additional drying beds, and we noted to make, you know, to indicate that in our design, to bring those out, you know, show any expansion of the system. Twenty years from now, just show that in, in the plans now, and we will do that in the process of developing the final design.
So if you're talking about bringing that many gallons to increasing it, you have to increase the building at that point also?
No.
You'll be able to contain everything going up to the twenty million gallons?
Yeah, these units are, it's, the technology is smaller, uh, the membrane units, uh, were originally designed in a traditional large, uh, filtration plant. We would have had to essentially build a similar sized building.
Uh, that's, that's what I'm saying, if you double it, okay, so it'll all be contained that we have here.
It's a smaller, that was one of the reasons why we've decided to make, one of the reasons we've decided to make the switch. But the main reason was for the, you know, the, the, the technology will account for changes in regulations and new, new contaminants, et cetera, it'll protect the village, uh, better over the long haul. And they're, you know, obviously, this is a big investment, uh, we don't want to be doing this again in five or ten years. So that was what was driving the, the redesign here. So I don't know if there's any other questions on the actual layout, I, I wanted to just flip through some of the, we, we had a couple of architectural renderings, uh, there were some comments on that.
The raw water storage tank, now, is that, does, does the raw water storage tank need to, to size with the amount of water being treated? So as the, if you were to expand, I know the building would stay the same, but if you expand the treatment capacity, you would have to have more raw water behind it?
I believe the storage, the raw water storage tank is sized to handle the future. I don't hope, yeah, we will finalize that in the design, but I think what we're trying to do is size this so we don't have to go in and put another tank in twenty years from now. And one of the comments from H two M was whether or not this was covered. This is covered, and Claire Wilson are both covered, so there's no tanks, uh, that'll be, that'll be.
The generator pad, it was forty by twenty, you know, that's one, that's a size, that's like a size generator I put in one of my, uh, data centers. Those are, those are massive.
Yeah, the, the reason for that is the pumps that are, you know, we're using to pump from this location to the village tanks are large pumps, and, you know, with this volume that we're talking about, um, you know, it's thirty, forty horsepower pumps.
Yeah.
And you need a good generator for that. And that generator was located, and it was a, you know, one of the comments the board had was it was located out in front of the facility, worried about noise.
I was just going to say, what kind of noise generator, like now?
Is it still, natural gas will be diesel?
Uh, I believe, I believe it was diesel, it's going to be diesel. We'll, we'll, we'll get you all the details on that.
So you're, you're going to have to have, I mean, and again, I'm just speaking from experience from the data centers I do, typically, we have diesel storage under the generator?
Right.
Now, would that be the, or are you going to have an auxiliary tank as well?
No, I think the, the plan was it was going to go under the, the generator.
Okay. And it would be, um, what kind of, are there going to be sound attenuation on it? Because those things are, I mean, I heard them are loud, yeah.
I hear one people on the water tank by me.
One, one of their comments was, we, we did a, a sound attenuation model, modeling to determine what the noise levels were at the property line and pre-built, et cetera, and we put a, you know, high-end sound attenuation on the, on the, on the generator that was located on the street. This will be protected more here, but still be sound attenuation.
And then the building itself, it's a, it's a prefab building, so what's going to, if you've got multiple forty or fifty horsepower motors running in the building, what's going to stop the ambient noise that typically comes from those guys?
This will be insulated, the building will be insulated, um, so the, the sound attenuation should, you know, shouldn't hear the pump sounds. I, I, the, the, the one thing we are concerned about, you know, is making sure that a generator, when that's running, will obviously.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a jet engine.
Is there a?
I mean, is that, could that have a lot of exhaust?
Yeah, you'll smell it.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you have, you know, how much of an exhaust and odor is that going to put out in the area?
Well, it's, it's only run, you know, in an emergency situation, and you typically test them once a week.
Yep.
So it's not going to be a, you know, significant amount, it's not going to, it's not the primary source of power for.
And there's not a lot of residential might around that either.
Um, and the, the smell containment area, the twenty by thirty pad there, um, is that where the, the trucks are going to offload both chemicals in? Is that the idea behind that?
Yeah.
So is that going to be a raised?
Oh, you, you mean chemicals for the treatment plant?
Treatment.
There'll be a separate chemical, uh, containment area for the, the trucks for the chemicals.
And what is that containing then? It says twenty by thirty spill containment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were still on the.
No, sorry.
Yes, that's where the, the chemicals will be offloaded into the storage tanks in the building.
So that'd be like a raised pool design where the truck would pull over and offload, or?
I believe it's going to be more of a sloped containment area. We'll, we'll have profiles and full design of that area for you in the final design.
And the, and the intention still with the drying beds that you would have, um, and I don't remember, it's been a while since we've been in front of us. I think it was either weekly or monthly trucks that would come to remove the, the sediment from.
Right, yeah, we're setting.
With the increase in capacity, does that change how frequently those beds are going to have to be cleaned out?
No, we're setting this up so that, you know, we'll be shutting one, one bed will be being cleaned out, you know, each month or each, you know, at any one given time, so that truck will come in and offload that one area, and the other two will still be happening. So you're not shutting all of this down and running, you know, six trucks at one time. It's at the edge of it, the, the slopes of the dry, dry sand too.
And I, one last question, the mound and septic system, because originally there were, was just like a small bathroom there.
Yeah, no, well, it was a small bathroom, but there was a lot of the, the, uh, testing equipment was all discharged into that, so you'd run water through the, the meters and sensors and stuff, and that was being discharged into the, the, uh, sept, the, the holding tank, if you will. And that's why the holding tank was so large. We've separated that out, we're recycling this in the new design, because it, it was definitely something, we got a lot of feedback from you and from, um, you know, be, between D E C and the county, uh, we knew we needed to address that. So we've reduced the, the amount of waste material from this site to just the bathroom, just a domestic bathroom that, you know, there's water to operate here much each day, so it's going to be very low flow.
So that mound and septic system is for just the, uh, the waste from the.
Domestic, yep.
And that, there was a comment on, on that system that, you know, typically you want it infiltrated to the ground, but we did do test beds out here, I think the village department was there to monitor. It's, it's all clay, and the perp test was, was awful, so, you know, perking into the ground here is going to be neck, we won't, we won't be able to do it without designing something like football field size, uh, each hill, and that wasn't suitable. So mound system is definitely going to be the, the way to go. Sorry.
Is there, you, you mentioned, um, you did some analysis of acoustic, uh, values at the property line. Is there kind of an estimated, uh, decibels that might be, uh, at the property line of the equipment running?
Yeah, it was, the, this was back when we had the generator up here, did the modeling and, and designed an acoustical enclosure that got us down to what the, the village's limits were at the property line. It was a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollar acoustical enclosure, but they're very expensive, so. We'll see what, we'll, we're going to rerun the modeling, you, you're going to want to see that anyway, uh, as part of the approval process. So we will redo that once we get the design completed and figure out what we want to do on the acoustical enclosure there to get to where we need to.
Is there any chance with the generators, instead of having one larger, you could run the two units in parallel? That would typically be either smaller or put out less noise?
Uh, we'd have to look at that.
It's just, it's just a, a question.
Yeah, I, I'm not an electrical engineer, um, so I, I will bring that back and we'll look at it.
If you could, that, you may, you may come back and say it's just not, because if a generator fails, then the entire plant shuts down.
Yeah, I think they have to be sized, you know, to handle that initial load, you know, when.
The initial, the initial surge load.
Surge, right, and that would require probably a large unit. And if we go to two units, each of those would have to be designed to likely take the surge.
I, I've done some work with data centers, we've been able to stage, uh, what equipment comes online as the generators spin up.
Yep.
You know, so.
Yeah, no, it's something definitely to take a look at. Yeah, because this is, as you mentioned, it's, it's a very large.
It's the size of, it's the size of a tractor truck, it's a little bit shorter than a tractor truck.
Yeah. So I, I also included a couple of, you know, um, slides on the, um, architectural, uh, materials. We, we did get comments previously, and we've incorporated those comments into the panels.
Yeah, if you could, so, these are, these are metal insulated panels, uh, color scheme was acceptable. Panels are, are textured panels, it's, you know, it's, it kind of looks like a stucco finish, but it's not. It comes, it comes as part of the panel, and if you could go to the other, um, the other rendering, you have that one. One of the comments H two M had was on this, you know, we're showing like a, an exposed section of concrete there, that's, we, we can, we will address that in the final design, they, they called attention to that, and we can get the paneling to go over that concrete, cover that up, that's not a issue. So we'll, we'll deal with that comment.
I know we did talk about the colors for a while.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we'll come back to you on that, we did go back and forth on that a little bit. And I thought we landed on this and everybody was in agreement.
In the front, where you're saying that they're going to bring the paneling down, is there a walkway there also, right in front of it?
Well, there's a door right in the, I'm sorry, I had it pointed here.
That's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, there is that big door in the center.
Yep.
There is a door, there's a door on the other side.
What I'm saying, right in the front area there, is there a walkway going across the building?
Where the, I don't know if you just, on the right side of the, the truck here, Tom?
Yeah, yeah, cross that hole.
And paving.
Or is it just asphalt up?
Or is it asphalt upwards? What I'm thinking is landscaping in front of that, the whole, basically the whole fountain, kind of foundation, but the whole bottom part there.
Right, do you have a sidewalk, do you have a three-foot sidewalk in front of this, or just asphalt right up to there?
I believe that was going to be asphalt.
Yeah, it's asphalt.
Hold on a second. Yeah, that's asphalt, because we're, we're.
Tight here, it was paving.
Is it parking right up to the door until?
On the other side.
So, I'm, I'm getting better than the animal I think. You've got to come in with a truck and be able to get over to the back and to that, to the generator, uh, to be able to deliver diesel back here. Uh, so this area is fairly tight, and we didn't want to impact, we want to keep that retaining wall up the slope so we don't lose the.
So the, and the, the slide we were on, there's no parking up against that part of the building, correct?
No.
Okay, this is, this is.
Yep.
Safety and so forth, you know.
I mean, would there be a way to put like a three-foot bed in front of that for plantings? Because that could take away too much?
It would take away, we have to push this back, retaining the stormwater retention basin. You know, we're trying to maximize that area for stormwater.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, that's the most visible part from the roadway.
Well, the, yes.
Yeah.
From the, from the access road, you can see that face of the building. But the, along the retaining wall, there will be landscaping along there, and that'll screen out that, the building from the road.
Is the, up here, right, the black dotted one?
Yes, yeah.
Does the, um, I don't remember the landscape plan, but does the, uh.
I don't think we actually.
I don't think we got.
No, no, we don't. Get there, I don't think we really got there.
We, we had a landscaping plan for the original design, but we're, this is a totally redesigned.
And I know you had gotten a lot of comments on the original, that it wasn't enough landscaping to.
We went back and revised it, yes.
Shot.
First, the first, uh, version wasn't enough.
You're going to be coming back with a new landscaping plan.
Yes, yep.
Well, I guess my question is, this rendering, the, the first one, or second one, I guess, where, or no, sorry, the first one where you see the building driving by this, the street, not the entrance, you had that view? Is that representative of the landscape that's going to be? No?
No.
Okay, that's just to show the facade.
It's pretty barren, it's pretty barren up there right now, so any landscaping is going to have.
It's going to help.
It's going to have.
That's why, yeah, that's why I keep saying landscaping in the front.
Just a mental note, so I don't forget, we do have a public hearing eventually, if you could bring actual samples of the finished colors?
Sure.
So the public would be able, the board would be able to see them?
Yep.
And just so we remember.
And there's no driver in that car, by the way, that was like the first thing I noticed, I'm like, there's nobody driving the car.
Oh, that's true, that's true, that's true. Parked in a living room, the one red one.
It's a, it's an automated car.
Remember the, the, a rendering, and it was in the middle of the living room with something like that? Um, I don't, you may have had it for the old plans, but we're going to need a turning radius movement.
Yep.
Um, and Kelly or Jim, Jim, we can get you the new, uh, ladder truck radius, that's what we've, that's what we've been using.
With the fire truck.
The fire truck?
Yeah.
He's going to need three sixty, so we're going to need to make sure you can make those at turn. I'm thinking that right turn on the corner is going to be tight, if anything, that fifty, fifty-two feet, fifty-three feet long, that's the length of the truck.
Does it need to go around the entire building? Yes.
They, they require three sixty access.
Okay.
And then, uh, with that, I know we have the straight road to get to the pits, so we're going to have, is, is the plan, they're going to back? I see the crossover, right, you have the crossover between the pits and the road. I would imagine the truck's going to come in and then it's going to back out?
Uh, the intent was to back, I believe they're, they're looking at kind of.
Coming back and down and driving out.
So they would back in from Seven Springs or, or down?
Come in, turn around, and back out.
Okay, so the, the, the turning movement plan is going to have to show whatever the truck that's going to be?
Right.
Can actually do that without clipping the corner?
Yeah, that is not going to be a large truck, it's going to be a smaller dump truck.
Like a ten-wheeled dump truck or something like that?
Yeah.
So whatever it's going to be, we'll just have to.
Yep. All right.
We still have all your thunder, Jim?
No, that's fine, it's, I like.
Okay.
Any questions on, uh, landscaping, or we're going to wait?
Yeah, great for the plants, I would think.
Yeah, I did, in that package, there's a sample of the retaining, because the retaining wall we had was a monster, it was, I don't know, fifteen, twenty feet high. On the old plans, we've reduced that down with this new layout. And I, I've given you a sample of the retaining wall that we plan to use, it's a stone strong system. Um, it's not a tall, I think our, our highest, our highest height right now is like six feet.
Six feet?
Yeah, so it's not that tall, and these, uh, we've used these on other projects and they, they work really well.
The, um, entry, if you, are you going to have, uh, the quantities?
Yeah, well, the, at this stage, we've identified the, the nine different potential chemicals we're looking to u- utilize. We have not gotten to the stage of sizing the storage for those and the containment, et cetera. So when we come back, um, we will have all of that detail for you. And those will all be located within that building, except for the, uh, um, I believe it's the soda ash. There's one, one chemical that's. Um, there's one, one chemical that's in a, it's, it's in a, a dry form that's gonna be in a silo. And that silo will be located outside.
What about fire, do they need any special equipment for chemicals that'll be stored there, or?
Yeah, they'll just let the, I mean, and I'm not trying to say this to joke, they'll just let the building burn.
Burn.
It's, it's pretty much what will happen there.
Usually we'd ask for a list of whatever chemicals will be stored to also be provided for the fire.
I'll give, I'll send it to Chief Bar.
Yep.
No mentos, I see you have sodium bicarbonate and carbonate, so we're not gonna have any mentos in the building, so we're gonna have it. Mixing between the two?
Poof. John, anything I missed? So, oh, the schedule, the last page, should be on the last page, yeah, just before questions. So, just to give you kind of an update on where, what our thoughts are right now, the final page of the, the handout I gave you. We're, we're, uh, as I mentioned, underway on the design. We just got going on the redesign of the, of the plant. So that's gonna take us likely through the, uh, end of the summer. And sometime this fall, early fall, hopefully, we'll be back to present to you the, the design package. And that, you know, if, if we can coordinate with you and DOH, we have to get through approval from DOH on the, uh, design as well. And DEC and the county on, you know, the Seppich side of the world. What our intent is to work on the approvals through the fall, winter. And hopefully by springtime, be in position to bid the project and get going on construction next year. With the thought that it's gonna be about a two-year, uh, construction period to get the plant built completely. So, the, the spring of next year, we'd be looking to bid it and then, um, complete it in the fall of, um, twenty twenty-seven. So that's our update, I appreciate the comments, like I said, from H2M, I don't know if you have any others?
Kyle, do you wanna?
No, most of like the, uh, you know, the landscaping that's gonna change, you're gonna submit that. ARBs, you know, you, you give us some new information now, you're gonna, you know, give us some more of the types of materials. I don't think it was really anything, utilities, you talked a little bit about why, you know, you're doing, you know, the septic systems you propose. Grading, we'd just like you to make, uh, analysis, cut and build, are you hauling in or exporting?
Yeah.
Material?
Yeah, we'll do that, yep.
You, you mentioned the retaining wall, um, your chemical storage, you're, you're gonna have a, you know, your spill prevention report, your PBS. Circulation covered, so, yeah, I, I think that's it. Noise to talk about.
Any questions? When we get the final plan, I'll send it to you. But I think we covered most of the circulation and stuff like that.
Yes. So, one question on the, you mentioned a new fire truck, uh, ladder truck?
It's here now, yes, new, uh, new hundred and seven foot ladder truck.
One oh seven?
The aerial is a hundred and seven feet, I think the truck itself is forty, between forty-eight and fifty feet, the actual truck. But we'll send you the turning movement template.
Okay.
So usually without, usually they just take that and plug that into their.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Figure it out from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Kelly, is there anything?
Well, I was gonna ask about those same things, but.
Sorry about that. A poor day question. All right, moving on.
There we go.
Timberland at Woodbury Common, review materials submitted for amended site plan and special permit for the reuse.
Redemise?
Redemise, yes.
It's demising?
Redemise.
I love it.
Redemise?
When I read that too, it just didn't sound right.
It's like the queen demise, whatever, you redemise.
Somebody, somebody broke out that thesaurus. Said property is located on suite six eighty on Woodbury Common property, go through thirty-two in Central Valley, it's under the Village Library tax map. Section two five five, block one, seventy dot two. So please, tell us about the redemise of the Timberland store. I used to like that store.
Hi, so I'm Peter Porzinski, I'm the architect from Simon Property Group. Right now, existing conditions, it's a, it's one suite, which is the Timberland store. The redemise is essentially breaking that larger suite into three, uh, smaller equal suites.
Just looking for your, no, I haven't.
Do you need to send yours?
Nope, there it is. I spelled, I spelt it wrong in my focus.
There's all that excitement about redemise.
Busy looking for the word.
It's a good word.
It is. I have the whole place ravel, I have the whole place ravel.
Oh, I like that word.
You like reportion, that's, that's what we use here.
Okay, so this is what it's gonna look, this is what we're looking to.
Right, so that's the proposed elevation, right now, there, the existing conditions are, um, just basically one, one larger suite with a gable out in front. That pushes out about five feet, uh, from the, um, the rear wall of the suite, um, but that will be removed.
So basically, you're gonna make it flat with three.
Yeah, so the, the, the way that the, this is structured is that the tenants want kind of equalized storefronts across the, the facade of the building. And by doing that, we're kind of creating just, just this uniform facade. And then the, on the far right, um, right now, that, that is a open air corner with a column that comes down. And we're going to infill that little corner there, yeah, you can see it on the right, there's some vending machines tucked in there, yeah.
So you're gonna fill that in so that becomes stores, uh, another, part of the store space, right?
Exactly, squares off the corner.
Yeah, you're not free to retail space, right there, I'll be losing some.
No dormers? You guys have so many dormers on the other side.
So, yeah, this, the way that this is kind of set up, um, is that we really don't need the dormers for the tenant signage.
Yeah.
We are limited by that fascia height of the existing building. So the storefronts are a little bit smaller than we'd really want them to be, and there's also structure behind the, the sign band, uh, that's kind of prohibiting us from getting maximum.
Again?
Glass.
Compared to what's around it?
With the rest of it? Is Timberland standalone, I can't remember?
No, it's.
It's connected, and they all had the dormers, right? Everything along that.
Correct, the suite on the, on the far left, uh, remains intact. So from, from, um, let's put it, you know, five feet from that blue awning to the right is, is the redemise.
Going to what I was saying. If the, you know, the rest of the buildings around it all had the dormers, keeping the look a little uniform. I think I know where you were going with that, right?
Where's the dorm on the new one?
There isn't.
There is, I see Tommy saying the dorm is on.
Oh, there, it's totally getting, I thought it just was taken off the picture.
No, it's dormerless.
Yeah, it becomes, it becomes basically a flat facade.
I mean, there's art.
You just put a couple of smaller gables, you know, above the doors, just to keep the uniform look.
But what is? There are dormers here, but the majority of Saratoga.
There's dormers on the new, on the new one?
No, so the, the main gable is removed. Right, so we take, we take that away.
This goes away, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then the red roof is continuous behind that now. So there is no, to, to redemise the suite, to go from one, one sort of anchor type tenant to three smaller tenants. We couldn't, uh, redemise the suites and keep that, that gable intact, because the structure comes down in front of their doors.
What about three smaller gables above the doorway, just to keep a uniform look?
Well, this, this, this gable stuff, this one and this one are staying, right, they're not disappearing, these two?
The one on the end is, is, is scheduled to be removed.
Okay, so the one above the vending?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying a faux gable, a gable?
Yeah, it, it definitely, yeah, it doesn't be functional just to keep it.
Overbuild, yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, like an overbuild.
Yeah, just, just to keep the status stable.
And the, and the reason, reason why that's actually occurring is because the way that the, the square footage is of the suites, their frontages don't align with the gables.
Understandable, but again, it doesn't, it's not necessarily that the functioning gable has got to be above the door, it's just.
No, but I think I see what he's, what he's.
Yeah, so you're going to have, you'll have the.
The gables would be.
Uneven.
Uneven.
Yeah.
Because if you put them up like to the store.
Two doors there and then the one to the far right.
Yeah, then it's, I don't know what's gonna look worse, what's gonna look funnier, a straight roof with no gable or gables that don't actually align with it?
Right, so you may end up.
Just two gables on the ends?
Yeah, you may end up with a gable that looks like that with the door slightly cocked to the side.
So then that, to me, that looks, that looks sillier.
What about just, what about just two gables, one on the, each far entrance? Yeah.
Leaving, leaving the, leaving the existing gable intact on the far right.
You can leave that, you can leave that one intact on the far right.
Yep.
Add supplement similar to the far left.
Oh, well.
That's basically sort of what I'm saying.
Hard life drawings, the best I can do.
I gotta go with that.
I work in cybersecurity, I don't.
I can go with that.
So actually, and actually, if we were to leave this gable here, it would be more symmetrical. Because you have both gables, what we're not showing in that elevation is this suite.
That goes, there's more to them like this.
Actually, it is, it is bookending the facade.
Does that one stay?
I think you need at least the one gable left there.
I think that's what he's saying.
Yeah, if he can leave that one.
The gable down here, like if we move the gable down.
Yeah, so that, if that one stayed, you, you basically end up with a strip here, a gable here.
And a gable there, that's sort of what I, yeah.
It would be a little bit, it would be more balanced.
That's what I'm looking for, is the balancing of it, just instead of.
Kevin's architect.
That's the, no, no, I'm just confused about, this is the, this is the vending machine, right, the short roof on the right.
Yes.
Yeah, but they're gonna be filling that in.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I think I'm okay like that.
Would you like a nice R table like that?
I listen, you know, can, can the lines be a little thicker?
Anything you wanna switch seats on, Charlie?
I sat there once or twice, it's okay.
That's where the candy machine or the vending machine is, is the door proposed where the door is there, or is it shifted?
The door.
Well, I think what you're adding is that that area right on the Chris's gable, that's the area that's getting added, correct?
Yes, on the far right.
So like if you went up to the picture of the, where the, where the new door is gonna be?
Right, so the new, the new doors will be, there'll be a, a care here, right? Then we have a little bit of some space, then there's two more, and then a little bit of space.
Okay, so one would be under the existing?
Yeah, so the intent is to keep it somewhat symmetrical at the best we can, dealing with that sort of existing suite that's a different square footage than these other three. And really keep the building kind of.
That's all I'm looking for, just, just sort of some kind of uniformity there.
Yeah, it's, it's actually just, just not removing the gable and keeping it in place.
I was just thinking Evan would go nuts if you text the gable, but then the door was not under the gable and it was off to the side.
Yeah, yeah.
Every time he'd go to the comments, he'd twitch with why.
Who was the architect on that?
Yeah, not, not me, it's, yeah.
So, okay, that makes more sense to me, thank you.
Any other questions on gables and door?
I have a gable I forgot.
Now, no.
Is there bringing all the fancy words?
Excuse me, I, I can Google architectural terms too. I learned a new word time as it was.
Read the buzz.
Read the buzz. What, what fancy stuff do you have for us?
Nothing compared to what it's made of.
Big engineering terms for us?
Engineers are not inventive.
Right.
Very functional. So I guess, uh, you know, the big thing is that the applicants should submit four plans, a site plan, that consider changes to the building footprint, if there are any changes to the building footprint. Because we have to look at the gross leasable area, the GLA, um, pedestrian movement and utilities.
Okay.
So, that covers it to bulk, it, you know, I, I listed some things in here about, um, confirm whether any changes to the billing footprint are proposed, update the GLA table.
There will be a reduction, so we're, yeah, we're going to, that, that gable pushes forward, we're taking it away. And then the infill on the corner is actually less square footage than that gable.
That one should take it away.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we see, as per your typical requirements, you recommend action, including a requirement that appropriate safety measures be provided for, to the satisfaction of the village building department for public safety. Mainly pedestrian access. Yeah, for, this is on the site plan, the applicant should confirm there's no grading or drainage implications, particularly ADA access. We've seen some slight sidewalk changes that have created ADA issues, so.
Right now, the apron is, is consistent, I don't believe there's a cross slope between the doors, if it is, we'll.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on the.
We've seen that before, you move the doors and now you create a cross slope issue and that, you know.
Exactly.
One thing triggers the other, so. Yeah, applicant should identify if any new, new roof leaders or downspouts as a result, result will be required and will be built. ARB correspondence from the applicant indicates their intent to match the existing finishes based on the distinct district colors and materials approved in the Saratoga district. The applicant should provide the board with the visual of those materials for them to compare.
Right, so we are, we are consistent with the finishes that, that currently are in Saratoga, uh, per the, I believe it was two thousand and twelve guidelines. And, um, it's really, you know, the paint, paint colors, finishes, masonry, uh, clapboard siding, roof shingles, all consistent in what's, what's existing.
Okay. We, also, this is probably a new point, but is there any modification to the utility connections due to this reportionment or degree demise?
There, there will be minor, um, there will be additional, um, mechanical units, um, because of the redemise.
But services to, to the building can, you know, laterals coming out will, will not change?
Should remain consistent, yeah.
Okay. So, we'd just like you to show that in the site plan, just to confirm.
Okay.
All right, and, um, we defer to council on secret, if there's anything should be noted. Can I just ask a quick question? We, we were under the understanding this was just ARB review, is it, is it not ARB review, or is it?
I have this as a secret site plan, site plan, special permit and ARB, but I think you're gonna like what I have to say next whenever he turns it over to me. Is it my turn?
I defer.
I defer. Just a quick question about the, uh, the roof leaders, I mean, I'm assuming they're gonna be changed, with, there's gotta be leaders coming off that dormer, correct?
Right, so the.
Do they go directly, how is the conversation directly through the ground?
Yeah, so they'll come down the facade, uh, as close as possible to the siding, and they'll go into a boot that's into the hardscape and that will connect to.
Existing.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Okay, so in terms of seeker, you can reaffirm your two thousand and thirteen finding statement. In terms of general municipal law, it was referred on the eighth to the county, we have our fact check, so we'll let them do. And in terms of public hearing, this is what I thought you would like, um, it is in your discretion, even though it's site plan and special permit. So what the code says is, in connection with proposed amendments to a site plan and or special permit, the planning board has the ability to waive the requirement for a public hearing upon a determination that such proposed amendment is consistent with the terms of any applicable special permit approval, or if no special permit is required, it is. And does not represent a substantial change from the approved site plan, so you would have to make the determination that whether or not it represents a substantial change from the approved site plan and that the proposed amendment for this use, um, is consistent with the terms of the special permit that's in place.
I would say.
I always say one hundred percent.
It's not a substantial change and it's consistent with these. So I'll offer, I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing.
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll also offer a motion to reaffirm the two thousand and thirteen finding statement.
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
We could have you work on a resolution, right? I'll offer, offer a motion to have council work on draft resolution.
Second.
Obviously pending your recent, um, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
I thought you'd like when I had that. Very few people are like, wait, I don't know that I'm how like what the lawyer has to say.
I'm available for presentations if you mean me to come. I'm available for presentations if you need me to come.
Draw a gable.
That'll be me.
I just want to use the word remind, it's in another sentence.
Read the bud.
Well, he's, he's saying, well, we usually use reapportionment, like, ooh, I like that too.
That's another good word. Lots of Scrabble words come up. I won't play against my eight year old.
My money's on her.
Last but certainly not least of the evening, Aon LLC slash hotel, have a good night.
Walmart?
No, Walmart pulled themselves off the agenda, they went to Monroe and got their rules.
Yeah, they don't like us.
They don't want to do this. Aon LLC Hotel, review and discuss materials submitted to amend the site plan, yeah, for modifications to our hotel, said properties located at 100 Estrada Road in Central Valley and is known as Village delivery tax map section, 226 block one, block 21 dot 22. Gentlemen?
I'm glad I didn't tell you to get here at six thirty, just to be early.
Well, depending on our topic, you know. Good evening, George.
Good evening, George Lithgow, J and G Law for the applicants, with me is Ming Yi, who is the project engineer, Dorothy Riley from Prestige. We're so close, I don't want to use any Scrabble words, I just want to get it done.
I appreciate that. So amended site plan, we're trying to dot all the i's, cross all the t's here, I think everybody knows what they're, they're here for, so do you mind, I'll just go right to Jim and we'll.
Please do.
Move this along. Oh, and I did speak to the superintendent of the highway department the other day, that he did have a conversation with you about putting the guardrail cap on the one side, he's working on the sidewalks and he marked out the pavement and the sidewalk, the cross walk, signage, right?
Yeah, he did.
You guys squared all that away?
There's just one remaining issue I'm going to talk to him about, there's one crosswalk he didn't mark out.
Okay.
In our, at our entrance, and then depending on how, if the sidewalk does come to fruition or not, we have to put cuts in, or like where does the crosswalk go if there's no sidewalks, right? But we'll figure that out.
But we'll leave that for, for him and the highway superintendent to work out.
I had calls with him the other day as well to try and get it.
He called me in the other day too to let me know that he had a meeting.
And I was like, get out there.
All on you.
All right. Uh, so parking, the plan provides 92 parking stalls, including one stall on a location previously approved, unmarked loading area, the board agrees to eliminate the loading dock as discussed below, the parking count is consistent with the original pool. So then we go to loading berths. So for a hotel of this size, the code requires one berth for each 40,000 square feet of gross floor area, this, for this three story hotel, two berths are required. At January 15th meeting, we discussed waiving the loading areas approved in the, to the original plan. To consider the waiver, we requested the applicant provide a narrative describing delivery operations in support of the requested waiver. So here, you know, you're saying that you're only getting deliveries of one to two times a week, breakfast supplies, monthly cleaning, office deliveries and occasional deliveries to guests, you don't need a, it's, you're confirming that you don't need a loading dock or a loading area, you're not gonna do laundry on site and things like that?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, sorry. Other than a UPS truck, Amazon Prime truck, that sometimes you have extended stay guests who order overnight, those sorts of deliveries we have no control, we're knowing how often that might happen, of course, but our food delivery, our laundry is not on site, so once all of our preopening supplies are in place, to be able to open the doors to serve the public, our deliveries will be nominal. We gave a delivery narrative, I think two months ago, to minimize impact and minimize traffic to the property. We'll probably have laundry supplies once a month, if that. Food, once a week, once a week, and we've already made arrangements to not have a tractor trailer.
That's what I was just gonna ask you, what size truck is gonna be doing a delivery?
So with that reduction in mind, the loading areas from one to two, the remaining loading area is 45 long, 45 feet long to 30 feet long, this would be, this should be confirmed as the information appears to be conflicting and it needs to be striked to remain as a loading area.
We can do that.
Uh, let's see, water sewer, although the applicant is not providing changes at this time, water and sewer connections and pump station facilities are shown on the plan.
This is, this is the landscaping.
Yeah, sorry.
We have a engineering site plan.
To the point of the water and sewer, the village department, water and sewer department was out there and marked the locations.
Okay.
Once we get that information confirmed, we'll put it on the plan.
Put it on the plan, okay. All right. So drainage is the one that, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we have, board is provided a comments on the stormwater management plan and we require follow up from the applicant upon the receipt of the stormwater management plan. We can determine if the revised SWIP is required and can impact our ability to act through this application.
So we, we did review that with Larry Toro from Civil Tech, they're going to go through that with you guys to make sure it's all, but it will be within the boundaries, it will include the four bay, it will comply with the stormwater plant, stormwater facilities as originally designed.
Okay. Yes, there's some changes in, there's some changes in the dimensions and we just want to confirm.
Yeah, we're gonna put everything back so it's the way it was approved.
Okay, all right. Landscaping, we recommend you consider a placement of trees opposite the front entrance and confirm the small window is adequately screened as discussed in your ARB review.
Yeah, there was a little window.
Little tiny window versus the other sides windows?
Yeah, a little baby window.
It was like a little baby window where the office was, I think it was, and these are, these are the additional trees.
Well, no, no, I have to put a tree at the bottom.
But you get to see a tree and not just a wall.
So that's what these three trees represent, right, George?
That's covering that window.
One of them I'm gonna plant, I think.
Utility screening, the plan now shows a fence installed around the utilities opposite the canopy, the detail in the landscaping plan calls out a vinyl fence, finished to be determined, although the detail itself appears to show plank finish. Board should discuss whether this is satisfactory as a finish in this instance and provide direction regarding material and color.
This is the material you want to use around the utility screening, right?
We can use this, we can also use white vinyl, it's really.
I like this too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it looks like ivy.
Yeah.
Sold.
Okay.
We'll include a condition that it should be maintained in like new condition.
Sounds good.
Which we would do for white vinyl as well.
We do for anything, so. And then this is the parking railing, right? Did I jump in front of you?
No, no, that's fine, yep.
And this is the railing you want to use around the, the parking stalls, right?
Uh, around the main construction entrance.
Yes, one of the recommendations is the guardrails be installed on the entrance drive because of slopes.
That goes, you make the right off of Estrada and then in.
Yes, and that's what would be utilized.
So it's maintained.
I think it looks better than the metal.
It'd be, yeah, it'd look better than the metal.
Where is it again? I'm sorry.
When you make the right off Estrada into the facility?
If you, if you want to pull it up, I'll, I'll.
Here, right?
Yeah, it's, it's there, yeah. That is, it's just on the left, right side of it.
So this is as you're coming off Estrada, there's a, there's a drop on like either side of that, so this is the, the guardrail to.
Does that maintain whatever safety requirements there are for being constructive wood versus metal or footings or foundations, et cetera?
Unless the guy with the cool little letters after his name.
Yeah, as, as long as, the, the detail that they showed is a typical wooden guide rail for a slope protection, and then there was some changes to the guide rail coming in off of Estrada, which I believe that's still gonna be metal. These would be fine.
The Estrada side is metal.
Yep.
But then the transition.
As you come in the driveway, wood is fine there, and they just should provide the detail that.
I would imagine there's a design detail that shows that this has to be.
How far down the post.
I mean, you're not gonna have cars coming in at 60. For the most part, you're not gonna have cars coming in at 60 miles an hour, so.
Just takes one.
For that treatment, that's standard, but they should provide the detail just so that we.
That can be part of my site, so, don't need to come back. Guardrail.
Uh, retaining walls, we just, we, yeah, we, previously the applicant provided a letter certifying the retaining walls in a previously approved locations that are longer warranted, we agree, we went out to the field, we agree, and the last one is signage. The, the sign plan now shows the location of a monument sign in the village right away, contradictory to the previously approved plans. We typically recommend that these structures be located within the applicant's property line, the code requires signs to be 12 feet from the edge of street pavement, a scale the planning indicates this is not complying, what's shown is our recommendation, the signs should be shifted to within the applicant's property lines, if not feasible, a minimum it should be 12 feet from the edge of street pavement.
I talked to the applicant about this, it's really not feasible, except they can get it 12 feet, so they're gonna move it to make sure it's 12.
This is the big sign on the, on the Estrada side?
Yeah.
So they're gonna move it.
To be 12 feet.
To be 12 feet.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Going the village right away.
But it's gonna be 12.
Okay.
So it will, it will be code compliant.
Sign's not changing, that's all that matters, it's just.
Sign is not, you're not changing the sign?
Nope.
Okay.
Sure.
Sure.
That's it, right? Any questions for Jim? And then again, I think that this, this is the updated landscaping plan, they actually, I think you doubled almost the amount of plants that were originally going there, right? Something like that?
Doubles the number of trees.
Trees, huh?
Right.
It's good. The little window that we asked them to cover on the offices is taken care of.
And there's some more landscaping on the Estrada roadside than originally proposed.
Right, you get the hedges and stuff, right?
Right.
Does that note say about the lawn in the, on the bottom right, oh, to allow.
To allow room for lawn, be located all.
It's all, I like the, my goal year round building to new, bad.
Thought it said something else.
Good.
No, I just have some modifications to.
So you'll pick up after me? George, me? You ever want to hang out in New York?
Why not?
Sucks the internet went out right now. Hold on, that'll be fun right away. Oh. Resolution. All right, so after several pages of facts and findings and a determination, we're okay with the one loading berth, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to waive the requirement.
Second.
And that also reduces the size of the, size of the loading berth from 45 feet to 30 feet long.
What she said.
Yeah.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Actually, I'm just gonna send it to you.
So specific conditions, all conditions of the prior approval in connection with this property show continue to be in full force and effect and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approval and conditions except as specifically set forth in this resolution. Any internally illuminated signs may continue to be illuminated past 12 midnight, provided that the lighting intensity is reduced by 50% after midnight. Should we just take this turn?
Maybe get rid of that.
Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with memorandum of the village engineer dated April 10, 2025 to the satisfaction of the village engineer.
I inserted a new one right after that, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a detail for the wood guardrail proposed.
Good catch.
Okay, continue.
All stormwater must flow unrestricted to drains and no ponding or areas of potential ice development shall be created. This approval is conditioned upon the applicant's compliance with the developers agreement with the village of Woodbury dated February 2020 and the amendment, amended developers agreement with the village of Woodbury dated 21 December 21, 2024. This approval is conditioned upon the applicant's compliance with the January 2nd, 2025 decision of the village of Woodbury ZPA.
I added another one, any fencing required as part of this approval shall be required to be maintained in like new condition in perpetuity.
What do you mean by like?
So if it's, which one did we go with?
Like if there's, there's sun.
So if somebody goes up to the ivy and slashes it because they don't like it and it's ripped and it looks terrible, you have to fix it so that it looks not like that.
But what about UV damage?
If it looks really, really faded and terrible, you have to fix it so.
If it turns like white from green or some weird color?
Okay.
Can we put gently used new condition?
Well, I think. I think you have to just take that into consideration if that's the one that the planning board likes, because UV damage is a thing, so if half of it looks white and half of it looks green, they're gonna want it to look.
Uniform.
They're gonna want to look, look like ivy and not albino ivy.
Spray can.
I don't want to know, however you keep it green.
I would imagine it's an outdoor rated product, right?
Yeah, no, it's an outdoor rated product, I, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how.
Well, exactly, no, I don't think it's gonna make replacement every year, but it's 15 years old and it's full of water and a fence.
Can we, can we just put a year requirement, we'll replace it every X years?
Well, I, I don't want to do that in case you get somebody that slashes it, so I would say. I think in maintained in like new condition and then it would be in the discretion of the building inspector and if he thinks it looks good.
Okay.
Then.
That's how we wear it all.
Yeah, they're, pretty much all the fences are like that and you'll, if you drive around, some look faded, some I may think look normal, you may think look faded and it's really, I wouldn't work out it.
Okay, cool.
George is like, I'm not gonna say.
Any questions? I'll offer a motion to accept the amended resolution as read tonight.
I have a second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Don't want to see you again.
On this app.
On this app.
So, so now that this is done, there's nothing holding us up from, after we've fulfilled it, of course, there's nothing holding us up from getting our CO.
You just need to satisfy the conditions to get the plan signed. You, do you have the rendering signed yet? No, so satisfy the conditions of the ARB resolution to get the rendering signed, whatever